Evening, everyone. It is July 24th, 2023, in the City Council Work Session. The city of L.A. needs to now come to order. Let's rise and give the pleasure to the leaders.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, your God, and the visible liberty, the justice of our all.
Patty, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Belinda Livingstone.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Notaro.
Here.
Councilmember Lloyd Roberts.
Present.
Councilmember Mike Zabel.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jody Shirley.
Here.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
City Manager Kyle Riefler.
Here.
City Attorney Randy Mora.
Present.
And Councilmember Frank Bankard was unable to attend.
Thank you very much, Patty. We have, it looks like we have six genuine agenda items tonight. However, due to recent events, especially on social media, a lot of confusion, disinformation concerning the whole proposal of possibly purchasing a boat. City Manager Riefler has asked me to add an agenda item so he can further present his case as to what he plans on doing with this boat and the size, the cost, things like that. So we're going to amend the agenda to be item zero for discussion of the boat purchase. And I would like to start right off with that item. So with that being said, I'm going to hand the floor over to City Manager Riefler.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to go back over the timeline of events with the proposal of the boat scheme and go over some of the facts and uses and just cover all the information where it's at right now. So the first budget workshop was on June 19th. At that budget workshop, it was recommended that we look into starting a savings program for a boat. And the reason why that was to have the ability to address the inshore issues that would have come up periodically with the city. So after that budget workshop, I did some research and found some existing government contracts and realized that for our use in a shower inshore environment, it seemed that the RIB with the boat would be the ideal boat set most other agencies tend to use for the purposes. And that stands for a rigid inflatable boat.
Mr. Riefler, can I get you to speak a little closer to the microphone?
Sure. And then, oh.
That's perfect.
So anyways, so I actually located a GSA contract for a 21-foot rigid inflatable boat. That contract I used as an example for budget planning purposes. The contract was for about $81,000 for that boat. And it was valid until 2028. So in preparation for the second budget workshop, I put in the savings program for the boat and put it on a five-year timeline at $20,000 per year. That's more than what the contract was. I just put it in for some little room, not knowing exactly when we plan to purchase the boat. At the second budget workshop, it was discussed to look into a possible faster timeline to purchase the boat as opposed to five years. We kind of suffered on board in purchasing it in the next budget year. Kind of left it to keep them over two years' savings program. Doing some further research since the last budget workshop, I discovered that for the specs of that GSA contract for some of the boat right now with that missile, if we were to go out to bid, we talked to vendors, it could offer a lower price and we're looking more in like the $70,000 for that boat. So the boat acquisition would allow the city to perform and address maintenance issues in the coastal waterway on Clearwater Harbor. The, I'll just put in order. One of the major components of our maintenance that we struggle to get to is the stormwater outfalls. We maintain 46 outfalls throughout the city. Currently, 14 of them have check bells. Right now, we're on a monthly program to get to each one of those check bells and clean them out. We struggle, staff struggles getting access to those bells mainly because we have to cross over private property to get to the bells. So depending on when we're timing out the tides, you know, for the time to get in the water, jump a ladder or sea wall, we have to get these residents to get permission rather than just go on their property. This boat would enable us to get to these outfalls in a lot quicker fashion than it was last budget year. I purchased a small John boat, which is probably about $600. We've been using that as a last resort when we can't get on the private property to get to the outfalls. It's not exactly the best, but it provides us an option because we have only a subwater trolling motor to use to get to these outfalls and, you know, to get to travel a decent distance from where you can actually put the boat in. And that's only a battery powered motor. So increasing accessibility. And also, we have several, the outfalls that do not have the check bells on them, they have oyster barbel built up in them. Typically, by the time we know we need to jet clean out, jet back the bells, they've already, we've already seen backup. It's happened a lot on Bay Shore Drive. So it would be a lot easier to be getting around and doing our inspections and keeping up with, when the bells need to be cleaned as opposed to just waiting for signs of problems. The next maintenance issue that would help us enable us to address is the buoys. We have currently, we only maintain 16 buoys that we put in on the beach side. And we have roughly 10 on the Clearwater Harbor side. The buoys need to be replaced. They eventually break from the tie line, which is down to the anchor. But oftentimes, the buoys experience issues before you need to replace the whole components like the line down anchor system. A lot of times, I don't know if it's vessels that are colliding with these buoys, but they break down and they have trouble staying away. Currently, on the Clearwater Harbor side, we put in seven. And it was less than a year ago, it was last fall. And they're already experiencing issues. And a lot of times, you have to hire divers to re-rank all the system. But if you have just an issue with a buoy itself, that's something that we could just pull up and switch out before the actual anchor line goes. Another main issue that we're facing right now is the signage for the slow speed zones on the pilings. Those exist predominantly on the south side of the city. But I purchased eight new those mean signs to be replaced. It was out of request of residents who live on the water. What I told them was that I would replace these signs. The last time I replaced the signs, it was actually a resident who asked to have me replace it and offered, they took me out on their boat to do that. I told the resident who was leading the request that I would purchase the signs and let them only have the stuff that would coordinate at a time with somebody with a boat to get them, change them out. The, another, I'll use for the boat would be the dock and sea wall inspections. The docks and lifts are frequently failing throughout the city. And by the time we're made aware of them, there's usually been at least a month and there's all, there's debris in the water. This is something, especially with the docks, that we could keep up with by, you know, visible signs of, you know, falling apart, being poorly maintained before they get to the farm where, you know, we get some high winds or wave action to push them over a little bit. Another note with the sea walls, we have had, since sea walls were brought up, I think in council meetings three or four years ago, we actually had a sea wall on Bay Shore giveaway just collapsed. You know, part of that backyard just went in the water. I mean, you know, that's not a good thing. I'm sure upon inspection, there were very obvious signs that sea wall was going to fail. The idea would be for staff to monitor this. Not saying that we would have an engineer on board, but we would be able to identify obvious signs of concern for sea walls and be able to take pictures and relay that to the city engineer for opinions. Another thing we could do with the boat would be the South Island, which is clear back there from City Hall. It attracts a lot of people on the weekends. That has accumulated tables, chairs, and all that garbage. There's been fires out there from whatever people, I don't know if they're cooking or if it did it on purpose, but we've actually, tables started on fire on the island. There's also, you've seen the American flags and other flags from time to time. It's some sort of hard to describe makeshift flag pole if erected on the island. Every once in a while, you know, the American flag is great, but we do get a political flag out there. I tried to address it one time and did remove it and dig them back, but it was not easy to do. I got some pretty glad in the process of trying to lift off the deputies boat to get to the island and take the flag down. That's something that I think if we did have a boat, we could consider actually, if it is our jurisdiction, putting up a real flag pole and flying an American flag, you know, and to do what belongs out there, there and a dozen other public islands. Another thing would be debris in the water. A lot of times, like I said, when the docks fail or sometimes this contract is not doing what they're supposed to. We've had, you know, 20-plus foot pilings floating around the water. People seem to immediately call us concerned that it's going to collide with their boat or their dock. And our answer is, well, we really don't have a way to address that, you know. If it comes in to an inlet channel area, which we had last winter, we came to close enough to get in the water, actually towed it over and had them hoist it out. But again, it's difficult. And we've had trees that were down and off bridges that were just, we did have any need to pull those out of the water. Another issue we have is red tide. We get out there on the beach side and, you know, pick up all the fish that are on the beach. It's not only the beach where those fish wash up. They wash up all in between the Clearwater Harbor channels. And they don't come right up within reach. They're kind of just floating around and smell. And people tell us that they're out there and again, what we can do? We try to reach them with skin nets, but if we have a boat that could, we can also take it out and provide a quicker cleanup for the residents. Another form of debris is the sunken debris that's out there. We've had people hit sunken concrete forming sort of shoals and they've lost their lower units on their motors. If, in the very least, we could locate these, we could mark them so that there was something to show me that there was a hazard. But we also would be able to pick a boat out there. We'd probably jump deeper into the bed of the underwater surface. It's not as easy as it might seem. And then it's come up from time to time. We have these derelict vessels, you know, acre out there. The sheriff does their massive reporting, stickering on them. But we also could monitor that so we could have a little share in trying to keep derelict vessels that are not applicable and just floating around, like the cell that came loose and floated into the bridge. Try to stop that before it happens. The proposed usage, in my mind, would be a minimum of two five-weekly patrols per month to address these issues. But it would be, those would be routine and then there would be maintenance projects, depending on whether it would work on buoys or cleaning stormwater bells or outfalls. I have done some research into the boat club and rental options that were brought up at the last budget workshop. Just run through some things for the, I'm trying to remember. USC Boat Club?
Freedom.
Freedom, yes. There's a startup fee. The program that we would probably be interested in is the Monday through Friday program. The startup fee would be $30,000 and the fee on a monthly basis would be $340,000. And that would, you could have a boat from as early as 7:00 AM to sunset depending on the year. Just, it's roughly about a 20-minute drive from here. I did look through the models available at the Polisys Club, which is an equivalent arena. And they do not have the grid models that we're proposing to buy. So given the bottom of the haul of boats that wouldn't really be as usable in the waters that we have to navigate through, but, I mean, it is an option to consider. The other thing I believe we have to consider possible damages for using it for maintenance purposes. I did some research on the Clearwater Harbor. We currently have 350 waterfront homes on the Clearwater Harbor side. And that makes up of our single-family homes roughly about 45%. The taxable value of our single-family homes on the water make up about 63% of the total taxable value of single-family homes. They make up about 44% of the total city taxable value. And of the total homesteaded taxable value homes, the waterfront homes actually make up 64%. So it is almost half the single-family homes, half the population, you might say, that is living on the water. You've got just the homes or not the condominiums. But most of the condominiums are non-homes at the progress. So it is interesting that those waterfront homes do make up a significant portion of the taxable value that comes into the city. The coastline of the Clearwater, the total coastline of the city is about 7.5 miles. And the Clearwater Harbor makes up 6.65 of those miles. And our beachfront is about 0.85. And just to put that in comparison, we have about 7.25 miles in City Street 78. And we have 2.8 miles of bike for stormwater, each of them. Another interesting thing is if you just compare the distance, we invest in our reef budget, a savings plan for $50,000 for our tractor, for our beach rig primarily use it to raid the beach. That's usually about four to five times a year. And again, the beachfront makes up 0.85. A lot of coastal coastline that we are also responsible for. I just wanted to kind of fill those numbers out there just for, you know, comparison.
Thank you very much. Very detailed information. Council, let's start with Leslie Notaro.
I am all for purchasing a boat for the city. It makes sense to do with property, you need it for the beach and the water.
Lloyd Roberts. I'm also in favor. I think sometimes it's difficult to always cost justify an asset acquisition. Sometimes it's just work that needs to be done. And the cost of the equipment or assets to do that work is not always going to be a scenario we say, well, I find that it's a good, we save this most money. I think, I don't think Kyle would come forward with his request if he felt like this is an asset we were going to purchase and it's just going to sit somewhere and not be used. So I'm comfortable and confident that Kyle is comfortable and confident that it's going to be used to better the city and I'm in favor.
Ms. Livingstone.
Kyle, I really appreciate all of the information you provided us today. I saw the posts and appreciate the time that you took to explain the reasoning behind that. I support you 100% and you gave very valid information. Thank you.
Mike Zabel.
Great question. This will be boat, trailer boat and store here on our site. Yeah, so we probably have a trailer except we were using it, we were planning on using it the following day for whatever project. We may use the subwounded arena.
Yeah, I'll go back at it. It's, most of the things that we've seen here, large expenditures, have all been concerning flood prevention, safety, our beaches, and support of our taxpayers. And frankly, that this boat is needed. We need to maintain our avenues to prevent flooding. We need to provide for the safety of not only those on the beach, but those on the harbor. This is needed and it's extremely well justified. Thank you very much. It's a lot of detailed work and really every requirement as to why we need this. I'm definitely in favor of taking the boat.
Vice Mayor Shirley.
So I agree. I'm very much in favor of it. I think I initiated the savings and then I came back to Kyle and said, I don't think we should save this over the next five years. I think we should buy it this budget cycle, especially after having a conversation with some residents and so forth. I have been one of the residents that has lent my boat to the city on a couple of occasions. We've talked about for many, many years how we can't maintain the waterways. We can't maintain the things that we need to do here on Barrier Island. And we have to maintain those waterfront areas. And so many times, there's a reason the city can't do anything because they don't have a vessel to take care of the problem. The, I've been involved in removing dead sea life with my vessel, calling out the water aquarium, letting them use it, letting the city use it. We've been very involved in trying to keep our canal clean and safe because we don't have the no-wake zone signs or missing things like that. A lot of the no-wake signs that are missing on the south end would be beneficial because manatee just love to pile up out here. You know, there's a lot of things that are outside of resident needs that are also just wildlife needs that we're not doing anything about because we don't have a vessel. We've spent a lot of money on infrastructure, but we are not able to maintain it all. And without this vessel, we can't do that. I'm sorry if there are residents that don't understand the concept of what we're trying to do here. But I would invite any resident to phone me if they have any questions because I will walk them through the reason we need this. We've spent a lot of time over the last 10 or 15 years trying to take, take care of deferred maintenance on infrastructure. And we don't let it back up with that same problem we started with when we started this stormwater project. So I am in total support. You have my support on purchasing the vessel sooner rather than later.
Thank you very much. I would like to thank the city manager for shedding some light on this topic. He actually brought some items to my attention that I was not even aware of whenever I was trying to think of, what would we do, how would we use this boat? If you take all of the benefits that the entire city receives by having a boat to help maintain our drainage, the check valves, simple rain tide issue, because we all hate whenever that happens. Looking at the isolate boats, if you remove all of those things and say, this is only for boaters, this is only for people that live on the waterfront. Well, everyone in the city needs to realize that approximately half of the people that live in this community are boaters. We are a boating community. We do have waterfront property. Not everyone does, but we all benefit from it. We have a boat rack right down the street that anyone can use. And I see many of our residents using that boat rack. So it's not just waterfront people. So just removing all of the benefits that help maintain our city and just assuming that, oh yeah, this is just for boaters, just for waterfront people. Well, it's still half of the city. And we owe it to, whether you're half one way, half the other. If you live in condos, if you live on the beach, whatever it is, we owe it to the city to maintain and take care of all aspects of this city. And I'm sorry that it doesn't openly appear to benefit everyone in this community, but I am 100% behind your decision to ask for this and I will support you all the way. All right? Do we have any other comments or questions for the city manager concerning this topic? Do we need any special boat to go to work? We've already, we've already added. I just wanted to go on public record and give more of the story than just what's being bled out on social media, which is a lot of it is incorrect. It's disinformation and it's confusing our citizens. So if you get any questions, please direct everyone to come listen to this recording. All right?
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, now we're going to get right back on track with item number one, which is discussion of consideration to reduce the city council from seven members to five members. I placed it on the agenda. You'll notice that I also included a page of data which shows the populations and the number of council members or commissioners that are on all of the cities or communities in Pinellas County as well as the Pinellas Board of Council Commissioners. You'll notice that we really stand out for having seven council members. Overall, it's seven, there's four, I'm sorry, four seven-member councils and there's one nine-member. The nine-member is the city of St. Petersburg. They have over 4 million residents. You look at the smallest above us, that's the city of Seminole. They have seven and they're at nearly 20,000 citizens. I bring this to your attention because, number one, we're now having to face this full financial disclosure report. And I know that some people are not going to have any interest in running again. I'm very proud of this council and I think that this is a great group of people. And I appreciate all of your hard work. But I also understand why you may not want to run again. Whenever you're in some sort of, some form of government and you're not having to answer questions to your next-door neighbor because you're discussing matters that they have little concern about, it's probably not as big of a deal. So people in Tallahassee can make rules like this and it really has no impact on them because they were already doing it. Whenever you get down on the municipal level or an intimate environment, you know your neighbors, but you don't know all your neighbors' business. And this is just another tool, I believe, to disseminate. And this is just another tool, I believe, to disseminate us from wanting to participate in municipal government. So the last thing that I would ever want is for us to have, or this community to have a council that elected seven members because they didn't have a choice. Because there were seven people out there and that was the, at any given time, right now it's four or three depending upon which election. You may have one good candidate you like and there's three more you don't know anything about, but you have no choice. You have to vote for them. And that's the last thing that I would ever want for our community. I only want what's best for our community. That means we need enough candidates where we actually have a real election instead of just, there you go, there's your, there's the four people that stepped up. I hope they do us right. I believe that our community deserves a choice. So by eliminating two council members, that's going to tighten it up a little bit and I believe that it will, overall, it will streamline the meetings. We won't get caught up in sometimes needless discussions where people are just wasting our time. I think that we can reach a consensus easier. I think it's easier to have a conversation and reach a consensus whenever it's a smaller group. You know, not everybody's always going to agree, but whenever you look at all of these communities all over Pinellas County, they all seem to agree with me that five members is way better to work with than seven or nine on a small scale such as our city that is. So that's why I'm proposing that we, that we seriously consider reducing the number of council members. And now I will hold up the floor for discussion. Floyd, I'd like to hear your opinion on that.
Thank you. I agree 100%. I'm trying to think through why I could support seven over five. I cannot think of any legitimate reasons to do so. All the reasons you expressed about why making the most sense in addition to these numbers that you provided, I think it's a no brainer. I think all four of the issues that you brought up, it'll be interesting, Randy, so that, I kind of view this as a blank piece of paper that we're starting with. So it's okay, we are talking about and discussing these various options. So at the end tonight, however we have felt as a group, this blank piece of paper is not going to be populated. And the next question is, and I think Randy's going to be involved with this, you know, how do we move from where we are now to this? I'm sure there's a very valid answer and process we can go through to make that happen. So that'll be the neat part, I think, at the end of the day, but I'm definitely for it. Thank you.
Leslie.
I think I'm for it, yes. Compared to these other cities, we're not that big if we need seven councils.
May I ask what made you change your mind?
I think looking at the other, I was surprised at how many of the cities have 35 members. Very surprised.
Any other comments?
Nope.
All right. Ms. Livingston.
I'm in agreement with mine.
That's it?
That's it. Given the data, I was in agreement prior because we're such a small city, I think five is a good number, but given the data, it speaks for itself.
Mike Zabel.
I gotta tell you, I came at this like a devil's advocate. First of all, I'm going to look at the whole line here. I was one of the people on the charter that said, yeah, we've got to have the term limits, but you can't be intransigent about that. I wanted, I thought every single thing said, look, how can I justify seven? How can I justify the term limits, the election cycles, everything? I couldn't. And that was kind of the indicator of, these are solid proposals. I mean, going down from one, yeah, I agree, down to five members places us in cities basically from us to much larger cities. I agree moving to four years for the terms. I agree with the term limits from two to three and foremost aligning the election cycles. Dave nailed it here. I mean, totally agree with it. You put it forward very precisely and frankly, we have to deal with changing infrastructure of what Tallahassee's doing. We have to maintain home rule and you've piloted us in a way that we can still maintain home rule, yet still have vibrant elections and vibrant communities. So, well done. I agree with you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Shirley.
Well, since Mike just moved the meeting along.
Oh boy.
On the topics, no, I am, definitely it's important reducing the number of members on council. I don't, I don't know how we ended up with seven and, you know, I think it's one of those things you start the process and then it just becomes habit and you never consider changing it. So with the facts you provided, I don't, I can't justify a reason for us having more members. We have so few citizens that are willing to step up and it's always a struggle to get people to fill those seats. No need to have extra seats if we don't need a seat we need more.
Thank you very much. I've already made my points on it. I tell you, before, obviously there's four core points, bullet points on this discussion. Really, they're all tied together. But before I go to Mr. Moore for his take on all of this, what I would like to do is go ahead and take each one of these one at a time. So if you don't mind, let's stay, just don't track and some of them actually go hand in hand, but based upon what I heard from Mr. Moore, we had a conversation about it, these are going to have to be on the ballots effectively if they, if we actually have citizen support and decide to actually take this to an election. So let's move on to item number two, that's discussion of consideration of extending council member terms from three to four years again by me. And my reasoning for this, I think all of you have heard it over and over about how we have very little clout in the county. We have friends in the county, but as far as having long-term relationships, it just, we need more time. Not only that, but this one is actually kind of a spinoff of the item four, which is to align the elections. And it's the only way you can do it. You can't align the elections without doing the four years, but I think that three years is, if we have good candidates, three years is not enough time for good candidates. I would give anything to have this council as is for a total of four years, but we know it doesn't work that way. But just thinking about how much progress we've made and how well we're able to get along, we have civil conversations and even whenever we strongly disagree, we're able to work through it and reach a consensus so that whenever our regular meeting occurs, we're, we vote together, even though we occasionally will have one that's, you know, one or two that's one way or the other. For the most part, we already know how we're voting whenever we get there. And that's the way a good council is supposed to work. So, that being said, let's move right on over. I'm going to go this way this time. Let's start with Vice Mayor Shirley.
So we're discussing extending the term from three years to four.
Correct.
I am supportive of that.
Okay. Mike Zabel.
I am in support of that.
Ms. Livingston.
I'm in support.
Ms. Natera.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
I am as well. I mean, and you already talked about the length between two and four because obviously if you have three years, it's an odd number. You can't combine that with even numbers of the midterm in general. So it's the only way to vote for them. Makes sense.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll just move right on over to item number three, which is, this one's a little tougher. It's discussing increasing term limits from two terms to three terms. Again, this goes right back to building those relationships. I've seen there's, it's kind of scattered all over the place. There's two-year terms, three-year terms, four-year terms, but because of where we're trying to go, I think that we still run into issues. By the time you get, let's just say on the Big C or you get on the Sun Blue's leading cities and you start representing yourself, if you're, usually you're going to be in your second term. I think the city has pretty much learned, let's not, let's not elect a mayor without learning who that person is. So the first term, you're here, you're building relationships in the community. The second term, you go out and you're on these mayor councils and you're representing our city on a bigger scale. And now you start building relationships there. Well, that third term is what's missing from actually getting the job done and where you can, now you have pull in the community and you have people that are more willing to work with you because now they know you and they have respect for you and they're in the same boat that you are there. We're all trying to accomplish something and the way you do that is you have great relationships. So I'm going to start with Ms. Livingston this time on item number three. A woman of few words. Mike Zabel.
Okay, during the elections, just about, well, a few of us were all accused of using this as a stepping stone to county, to state, to federal electoral elections. And that can be farther from the truth. What this does is it enables the sitting council and the mayor to actively work to protect the citizens by working local. None of us here are voting for state council, just want to protect the community. And this is really the best way, and again, I told you, I only wanted two and I'm voting for that, but with the changing conditions, I now believe this is the best way to adequately and proactively protect our citizens and further their cause, you know, like I said, the Big C or to the county. So again, well done. I'm definitely in favor of this.
Thank you, Ms. Zabel. Vice Mayor Shirley.
This one I'm not in favor of because if you give someone a 12-year span on council, which is what we were hoping to get away with by putting the term limits, so if we extend the term from three to four years, then it just puts someone in that seat too long, in my opinion. So I would not be in support of it.
All right. I will withhold my comment, but I will come back to you.
I understand why you're asking about it, just anyway.
Mr. Roberts.
I'm in agreement and obviously, even though we're saying we want to increase it to three terms, in this case ideally three, four-year terms, the individuals still have to run for election. We're still being voted in that camp. So if they're not doing a good job, I would like to believe that the citizens of our city will take care of that issue. That's just my opinion.
There was a time in the city when no one stepped up to run for the total seat. So I'll just say so.
And your comments to Ms. Livingston, I'm sure you never pass any, which is why.
I do. At least not listening. Leslie.
I agree with Vice Mayor Shirley about increasing the length of the terms and increasing the term limits together at the same time. I go for one or the other, but that's all.
All right, thank you. And so my justification for this is twofold. Obviously, extending the term from two to three, I think that that's a requirement to continue building relationships outside of our community. I know that for a while, we actually were just sort of here and really didn't have, didn't have much of a relationship. I'm not saying we didn't have relationships, but even today, as hard as I'm trying, there's many times where I feel like I'm just beating my head against the wall. But someone who's been in an additional term, is serving their second term as mayor, they actually seem to get more of their voice. They get more pull with the county and the county commissioners are, it seems to me they're more willing to listen to them ahead of myself. However, I am quite the barking dog at times and very annoying and I think they're all starting to figure that out. So being forthcoming, yes, you're right. This would take us from a total, possible total, from six years in office to a total of 12. It's all possible. Again, I'm worried about the number of candidates that we have. If we were staying at a seven council and opened the door for 12 years, I would be very worried. But I think that by reducing, you take away some and then you give some. And I think that, in my opinion, it would be the best and best for our community. But if it actually makes it to an election, I guess the citizens will decide one way or the other. And that's why Randy said that these would need to be separated issues. Mr. Roberts.
Yes, so, you know, Mike, you understand the direction they're coming in. So as Dave said, if we go from the seven to the five, so the elections every two years would be three people and then two people if we go to the five.
Correct.
So, gosh, I'd like to believe, let's say we go to the three-person election and there's somebody in there that's not doing the job properly, that we could find, the city would have at least one person, two people that would step up, you know, at that point. You know, I think that was proven the last election that happened, so. But I know what you're saying, if nobody else was running and the city felt like the current candidates that are running again, whether it's a second or a third term, I just can't imagine them sitting by the wayside and just letting it happen, I hope. So that's my thought. But I understand what you're saying. But that could actually happen with just two terms.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Any other comments or questions? Okay. So right now, we are at a four to two. Any other comments that you would like to make? Ms. Shirley. All right. So now let's move on to the last one, which is item number four, aligning our election cycles with the general and midterm elections. Going back to what I said about sometimes you don't get a lot of love from the county. I did reach out to the board of elections and I sent a nice email requesting what would be our savings, what would be the process, and what would happen, what would be the benefits or the pros and cons of switching to being aligned with the general and midterm elections? Unfortunately, I got crickets. But I know for a fact, we've been told in the past that there is savings. I don't know how much it is, but it's a, because they're already running an election that goes to everyone in the county, it's much cheaper just to tag along on a big, a big set of ballots rather than the smaller ones. I did look at the election dates and how many communities are aligned with us and it's sizable, but I think overall, we would have better turnout because everyone votes for the president. And if it's heated, it doesn't go well and if the midterms are all around, everybody still goes to the polls and they vote. So I think that we're going to have the best turnout if we align our elections with a general and midterms and then that goes back to the four years. It would just simplify things for us. So I'm open to comments. Anyone raise your hand if you'd like to speak on that one.
This certainly becomes a, shall I say, an issue if we don't go from the three years to four years, right?
That's correct. It's out of the question if you don't change the four years. That's correct, it's out of the question if you don't change the four years.
Yeah, I, I think it absolutely makes sense. My only question would be logistically, as an example, so we have in March an election coming up, correct? Okay, so changing the charter, we would have to have these items during that election, correct?
That election or a following election? Again, we're, we're opening the discussion and having a debate on it. And then I would still encourage everyone, if we decided to move forward on any one or all four of these items, to, to reach out to your constituents and see how they feel about it. So far, I've had very positive feedback concerning this, this matter. They see the writing on the wall with what Tallahassee is doing to us and they think that we'll be able to defend ourselves better if we continue moving in this direction.
So just, just following that process then, so in March, that election would take place for how many of us, four or three, just three?
The next one in the year is three.
So three individuals would be elected and they would be elected for a three-year term?
There, I'm going to let Randy start addressing this. We sort of touched on it, it's not an easy task, but to do it.
All wonderful questions, a few challenges to know in the process. You're talking about four separate ballot measures, at least at this stage, these four. Assuming, let's say, I know that we risk reaching consensus a lot, but let's say we get there as there has been on the other three, what I would do procedurally is put together an ordinance calling for the specials, calling for the election, and it would state whether it was, you know, I don't know that we'd be on the timeline for a November election yet, if there is, you know, if there's something we have, we would likely be on the March cycle, which gives us more time to figure out how it's all going to look out. But ordinarily, when you do a resolution or when you do a proposed charter amendment and you do an ordinance calling for that, for that special, for that issue election, and then you do a separate ordinance or resolution setting forth the actual ballot language, which has to be limited to something like 75 words or so. And, and then from there, we also have the ordinance that says, okay, and it's been approved and so be it, the language of the max. The challenge that you have here when you talk about the four of these is for some of you, you're like, well, I, I like the idea of one and two or one and three, we don't know what the voters will do. Ultimately, any charter amendment has to be put to the electorate. The electorate can take one and mount the other and then we'll have to adapt accordingly, provided that we don't make these things conditional. And so, you know, for example, in one, we're talking about changing the seven to four, we may have ballot language that suggests changing our seven to five, that changing the seven to five and other such necessary revisions to affect this change. So if it's the quorum element, we're not going to put a specific thing just for the quorum number, but so that it all is, is consistent. So a lot of your questions, one depending on what the, what the electorate does and ultimately moving forward, how we, excuse me, how we very particularly say, okay, does that mean we have to make this operate? So these two seats, that's the details that we'll have to figure out as we get closer to determining precisely the ballot language and its function. So I'm not in a position to sit here. I do want to allay the concerns of any viewing public or casually observing members of the public that the consensus of this work session is simply to move in the direction of putting a measure to the voters. The charter cannot be changed, the work session is not changed tonight. I know you folks have sometimes had to deal with an understanding on the civics process. I want to make very clear that all you're agreeing to is to have things put before you for your later review to affect these proposals for the voters to vote on. And that's what we're discussing tonight as far as the specifics on what every single measure would say. I'm waiting to get some guidance from you and I think we're there now on which ones are approved and which ones aren't. But then what is their interplay and how, what conditionals and statements do we need to put in this to make this make sense?
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Moore?
Mr. Roberts? So let's say, and I hate to use scenarios that are fictitious, so let's say John Doe runs for a council seat in March, and at the same time, all four of these items that are affecting our charter are also on the ballot and they're all approved. Just make that assumption. So then the general election happens in November. Just, you're kind of feel with those, those same three people, because in this case it would be three that were dis-elected, John Doe, Bill Smith, and Don Johnson, they're all in now in March.
Try to see, don't get us crazy.
That's right. So now November comes up, would that make the most sense for all three of those people to run again, to be tied in to the new charter guidelines?
It's, it's a good question. I think that the, the more narrow part of your question is what is the effective date of these changes? And I think that's part of what we would need to resolve as we look at these. Does it make sense, much in the same way that you have a charter provision that says that you folks are available to go on a raise, but it shall not take effect until two cycles after? We can say, and, and as you look at the language here, and you can see what year it was that they started to make this change to, you know, seven members on these terms, because they have on three-year terms, because in the three-year terms provision, section 2.02, they start laying out, these terms will begin in 2012, these terms will begin in 2013, by 2015, everybody's on the same schedule. So clearly, in the last 15 years roughly, your community has already done a version of this. And so the effective day element is going to depend in large part on what you folks decide to do and then we'll have to look at what does make sense. If we do, you may have to have, the ballot language is not going to lay out chapter and verse the decision tree of what happens. We may have to have, you know, if this measure is approved, this cycle, if this measure is approved, this cycle, I'm not sure, I have to look at how they would do that. Candidly, this isn't something communities do all the time. If it gives you any comfort, I'll say it's very prescient of you to be looking at some of this, not on this legislative session, but in the last legislative session, one of the preemption bills was to force all municipalities to move to the November cycle. There was a lot of resistance because of how different communities have, you know, evolved and keep their, their process going, but those kinds of discussions are being had and it's prudent to evaluate if that's something your community wants to do proactively. But how we make that work, it's one of those endeavors in the details and I'm not in a position right now to tell you if somebody's elected in March, how we would do that. We would look at things like, well, who's, who is the next set to cycle off? Maybe we tier it that way, there's a whole series of ways to do it and that's not where we're at yet, but it's a very good question, it really just gets down to effective dates of what we, of the actions taken. So it would be like, shall we, beginning in 2015, transition the council to, or rather, let's say it's 2022 now, beginning in 2027, shall the council transition to a five-member body or something like that? We make that kind of thing clear.
And just to add, what Mr. Moore just stated or told, or just said, is that it could very well be that the last council, the seven-member council, they made sure, that their term may be a little bit longer than what it would originally have been, or it could be that whichever cycle it is that falls on, it could be a little bit shorter. But it would be something that the council would have to agree upon, because we'd have to run an ordinance to actually be able to address this. So it's a, it's a single-use ordinance that once the transition is made, it would be accepted by all that, okay, maybe instead of three years, you're three and a half years or something like that, or maybe you're two and a half years, just to make everything line up with the general and midterms. Okay, all right. Does that, does that help? Any other questions or comments? All right. Obviously, we still have some, some things to discuss and determine where, where we would like to go, but before we do that, I highly recommend that you do, you go out and you speak to the public and get their take and see where they stand. Are we wasting our time? Is this something that will never pass or is this something that most everyone will agree on, agree upon?
Mayor, before we move on and perhaps I'm jumping the gun here, I don't believe I got clarity on the individual members' positions on before the proposal for aligning the midterm cycles. I may have just missed the understanding.
Well, I think we're just answering if we have, if we have, I think everyone's in agreement, but we were just answering if we have questions.
I saw the questions, I just wasn't sure if that was indicative of them.
I think for the most part that we were a little weak on the increasing term limits from two to three. And I totally understand why, but what I'm hoping is that if, once they, once everyone goes out and they speak to the community, we get a little, a little more of an opinion and we'll see if we're still on the same page next month, whenever we have the next work session.
Understood, thanks.
Is everybody okay with that?
My, my last question, given the posture of, okay, there's a general intention to move forward, but we're going to, you know, talk to our constituents and see, as a function of action items for me, should I start preparing documents, ordinances, et cetera, or should I hold off for now with an understanding that that's unlikely direction?
Let me ask, if you're just thinking about it, is that billable?
I don't, I don't do the Ithaca.
I can't charge for my shower time.
No, no, that's not where I'm at. If I lose a whole night's sleep, maybe, no. No, no, I'm talking about if you actually want me to put keystroke to computer, pen to paper yet, or if it's, give us a little more time, we think we're there, but we're not sure, I just, I wasn't.
I think for the most part, the council is, is on board with this. I'll just ask the council, what do you?
I think we should move forward with ordinances, given the amount of time, some council members have created, and it's something that's high on the priority list to move forward, so I think we should move forward so we're not wasting time.
And that gives us more time to say, this is what it looks like, we don't want this, we do want that same. I have no problem doing it, I just want to make sure I'm not doing work that you don't want.
Okay, well, in that case, what maybe, what might not be a bad idea is beyond what we've, we've written right here, maybe some sort of a pathway, how to get from here to where we'd like to go, to something, not, I don't want you to spend a lot of money on it, but something brief that we can actually show, show the community, hey, this is kind of where we're going right here and what's your thoughts? I think that that will be very helpful.
I can, I can do that, I can do a summary of it. Mayor, you will know the one thing we'll have to be mindful of as we get to, a ballot measure is the city's inability to advocate for the results of that. Just as a friendly reminder, the statute's changed and advocacy for official city circulation. You could say, purely factual, this is the ballot language, this is what we're doing. But I just want to make sure, because we do have some new reminders, not everybody may be aware of that.
Now, now, this is where I'm a little, a little confused. Are we allowed to actually, once we come to an agreement as a council, is that where it stops with trying to communicate to the community? Or are we allowed individually, are we allowed to go out and speak to our neighbors and say, this is what we're, we're thinking about? Is it as long as we're not on city time? In other words, in this meeting or we're in city hall, is that, are we pretty much free to speak as we'd like individually?
Generally speaking, yes. What I prefer, just because it's been a moment since I've seen, reviewed the electioneering statute, I was very familiar once it was adopted in 2022, I want to revisit it on what that looks like. I can tell you, electioneering communications are, you know, defined by statute and it goes into limiting what that looks like in camp. I just want to make sure, I will provide you folks supplemental guidance on where that line is, I think that will be a critical part of this process as well.
I appreciate it. Mr. Roberts, you had a comment or?
Yeah, just a quickie on page 202 of the document that you provided for us, where it says, discussion of increasing term limits from two terms to three terms, that highlighted area at the bottom, I actually read this before and the same file comes up. I think based on the language, I know the answer, but I just wanted to clarify. So it's council members, including the mayor, should be prohibited from holding office for more than two consecutive terms, without any additional language there. That kind of tells me somebody could go two consecutive, take a break, come back to two consecutive, is that what the intent was?
In terms of charter, yeah.
Okay, right.
And the reason why that came up was that we, you're forced to take a year off and the next election, you could now, on the odd cycle, if you wanted to come back. But you, you're required to at least take one year off and then the citizens decide whether you, they want you back or not.
Okay, it makes sense.
Any other questions or comments? All right, Mr. Moore, I appreciate all your help and Council, I appreciate you giving me time to, to run through this. All right, now we are on to item number five, which is discussion of marina rental policies. This is placed on the agenda by Councilmember Zabel. Mr. Zabel, you would have the floor.
Okay, thank you. My task basically was response to the mayor, was to use the mayor's outline regarding re, is a re-sized zones, you know, basically large, medium, and small. And factor that into, for each a waiting list for the marina that could address individual boats in those areas, trying to balance fairly the interest of resident owners, non-resident owners, residents, et cetera, trying to, trying to balance it throughout the community. Since this was outlined a month ago, I haven't any updates to this, I just wanted to know if you have any updates? I mean, I'm free for updates, you want changes, et cetera.
I would be willing to just let you go through, it's, it's not a very long policy and it's relatively early, I have no problem with you just going line for line, ride through it. And explaining what the changes are and if we have any questions on each one.
Absolutely. Obviously, well, the first one's data issue, that's a purely administrative. What we wanted to do was provide a procedure to address the marina waiting list and how to do this fairly. Background, we maintain the waiting list for 18 boat slips, list of 98 to 19 feet and lengths from 24 to 50, and that provided the basis for the three zones, the large, medium, and small. Now the procedures, what the city, and these are my updates, we're splitting the waiting list into three separate zones, in terms by the slip size. A person desiring a slip will make the decision as to which zone their boat fits and places themselves on the list. That allows you, if you own a boat, you can say, I want the 19-foot boat slip. So I put my name there, I can't put it on small or large, I just got it on the medium there. But it also allows a person with no boat to go, hmm, large, medium, or small, if the wife approves, I want the large. Okay, put your name in there, because later on we'll address those with no boat, you have so much time to get a boat, put it into the slip if you've been accepted. Now, you can't move from one zone to the other. Once you're in that slot, large, medium, or small, you stay there. That allows others to populate the waiting list for, say, medium and small. We don't want one person taking up three slots, that could be a little bit wasteful of the time and it works against other citizens that are just like you. Again, trying to be balanced. Now, the list here, the, if you're ready to just look at the city, you have to fill out the marina waitlist form. Obviously, the list form is not listed on this, but fed details with obviously your address, phone number, contact information, whether or not you have a boat, what size of the boat, what size of slip are you going to be requesting, again, which of these three, large, medium, and small, are you intending to place yourself in? Now, like today, we'll have a, over to C, based in, by 7:30 first, we're going to go through the, you know, confirmation of interest. We want to make sure that this list is current and updated, we want to make sure that we're We want to make sure that we're going to send you a letter saying, hey, you're still interested, you still want that large. You know, if you maybe change your mind, well, you can remove your name from that list you already got yet, maybe move it up to another list, but again, you're going to be at the bottom. You may have been number two in the large, but now you change your mind, you're going to go to the bottom of the following list. It allows people not to really be bypassed. Now we get into a little bit of detail here. You have to, and like I said before, put your name on the list without having to vote. You're agreeing by signing over the documents that you are able to obtain a compliant vote within 90 days of accepting the offer of a slip. So day one, I get the phone call. I had placed myself on the small list, thinking that's all I'm going to get away with, but in the meantime, my aunt's died, left me a considerable amount of money, I want to go to the large. But you can't do that, you have a, you were on the waiting list for a small, you can't move around. So you're going to have to obtain that vote to fit into that small slip that your name was in. Or you already have your boat, fine, move it right on in, and get the transactional city call.
I have a comment.
Yes, yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Roberts.
I was just going to ask the question, so what would be the downside of not having to state at the beginning what size boat you're going to have if you don't vote at all?
Because that would take the place of somebody else that might already have a boat and is waiting to move their boat right now into a slip. For example, if you signed up for the large, your name is now on the list, maybe you're number two now, and your name came up, but you can't get that vote. Well, that's unfair to number three, so we have to move number three out. You're pulled off the list because you have decided not to accept that vote. That's why you really have to narrow just one of those lists down. But some people, in fact, most of the people that will be on this list will already have boats. And that's an assumption I made, and trying to instruct this.
I'm just thinking.
Yeah, think outside the box, look, it all over the scene.
If I don't own a boat.
Yeah, you already answered mine.
And you, and you contact me and say, well, we have an opening, just based on where you're in the list, and it's for a slip of this size, therefore you have to have a vote of this size.
Well, you were already on the list at that, you've already picked one of those three.
I'm saying if we did, if we didn't.
You're not on the list, you gotta pick, you gotta pick.
I'm saying if we don't, if we don't approach it that way of requiring somebody to be assigned, if we didn't do that, if it's just a list of people that are whatever their order is, and then we're giving them the flexibility of choosing a boat. I mean, even if they had a boat already, they might even have a small boat, but now they're next up on the list, and they may say, well, I've got the small boat, in your example of the rich hand, so now I'm going to buy, I'm going to sell that small boat and try to get a boat, because the bigger slip is not available. I'm just, I'm just thinking.
No, no, I'm just thinking, I would, go forward, you're not on the big list, only those people on the big, so you're forcing them at the beginning to gate yourself into one of those three gates.
That's my question, why are we forcing?
I'm going to chime in here a little bit. Number one, okay, you suddenly change your mind because a 40-foot boat is available, but you, that's not what you planned on, and you actually, whenever you put your name on the list, you're sort of thinking logically, okay, well, this is the size boat I think would be the most practical for me, but also, I'm perfectly capable of handling this size boat, whereas suddenly he realizes there's a 40-foot slip over there that is coming available, and he can just jump over there and get to the front of the line. And so he goes and buys a 40-foot boat, he's not, he's not waited, and he's probably not qualified either. There, you can go all sorts of ways with this, with this conversation, but I think that you, you're going to lease a slip from Beller Beach, you probably need to know what it is that you were putting that slip in advance. I think that that's, I think that that's fair, and it also creates more opportunities for the residents, because now we've got three lists instead of just one list. But, you know, everyone's going to have their own opinion, I just thought that that was the most logical way to do it.
Okay. And like you mentioned earlier, you said you're assuming that most of the citizens already, probably a small percentage of the people that are signing up.
I'm assuming.
Most of them, we'll just see how they vote.
And I will almost challenge you on that, not going to challenge you on that, but I'm very close.
I am, it's, look.
And I'll tell you why.
I would get angry, it's like it's always been a document.
There are people that don't have boats in Beller Beach, or they're nowhere good, and they don't want to go down there and push in high and dry, and so they don't have a boat. But if the slip came open, then they're going to want one really bad.
Yeah, but we hit you right there, we already put that into the wording, where to sign up for a boat, so you don't need a boat.
Yeah.
I would just make it out there on a remark, I guess most of the people on the list have boats, but yeah, you're totally able, you just have 90 days, but wish to put a boat that matches that large, medium, and small into that slip.
Okay, and I'm also going to challenge you on the 90 days, and the reason why is the bigger the boat, the harder it is to find one. You can find big boats, but to find the one that you want.
You still got to run a test for your surveyor, you know, I'm with you.
There's a lot involved, and that's why I was actually okay with the six months, to give somebody time. If you wanted to buy a boat in Mississippi, it's a big deal to get that thing here, but sometimes that's where the good boats are at, you know, instead of just here. I'm just saying, we don't really accommodate big boats.
That's up to the council.
And so I was okay with 180 days, just because of the fact that it may take you that long to find one. I think even with a little 24-foot fishing boat that we bought, it took us a foot four months to actually decide on that boat. With the one that we have now, we ordered it, took a year to get that thing. And so what I would have to do is knowing that I had a boat coming, and I had nowhere to put it, hope that it opened up, and then put my name on the list, and I'm still gambling on the six months. So.
Do you want to move it to?
I would say 180 days would be more realistic.
I should.
Do you get to pay rent? Do you rent that one? Do you get to pay rent through that 180 days?
Yes, you would pay rent, yeah, you would, that's yours.
And is there a deposit with this application for somebody to get on the list?
Off the hand, I don't know what's on the.
I don't have the app for me.
There's not currently.
So they're not putting any money, they're not putting any skin in the game?
They're not, yeah, well, it's.
I think that's a problem.
No, no, that's to be on the list, if your name comes up, and you have signed up the largest slip that we have, well then, you have to start paying rent right then and there, and you can keep that rent, that slip, while paying rent the whole time for up to 180 days.
Might be the time to put the, the list in.
But that's the only way, see, that's the luxury of being able to have a slip and look for a boat.
But here's my point, like, you can just add your name to the list all of the time, because one day you hope to get a boat, you're going to add your name to this all of the time. And there's no requirement to put a deposit, which I know it might create an accounting nightmare, but I'm just saying, there should be some skin and game at the application.
They will. I see what you're saying, so put some, put some cash down just to, here's an application fee.
Yes.
Okay, I'll put that, I'll put that in there like that.
And then, yes, then once you accept the slip, you start paying.
They want to start paying rent, yeah.
They say pay rent, and it might be the time to put a boat in there.
And I, I would, you know, I know we're trying to make it light and like, but I, I agree with you, if someone doesn't have a boat, sometimes it might take a while to get one, but it's still, we're back to Mount Dass Hookup, and sitting empty for six months, and you got other residents that want a boat slip, so it creates this appearance as though we have a boat slip. So I would just be cautious about playing with that too much. I don't know, you know, I don't know if you get into a new process, if it's a big boat, or if it's, you know, I don't know. I'm just saying, typically, if you have a boat, you put both, you go down to the green, maximize.
Green, right, exactly, it's the bigger ones that are harder.
Only because they're so expensive, right? I mean, they're all expensive, but I'm just saying, they're very expensive, and it's hard to find the right.
It's hard to find the right combination. I would be all for the deposit, however, I would, because we're trying to make sure that the marina accommodates our residents, I would be all for the deposit provided it's applied towards the first month's rent.
I'd like to turn further, the application fee, you called it application fee.
Well, I, this would place, yeah.
So what happens if the person who's next up in line, who paid that fee, now says never mind?
They don't get it.
We'll get that.
Whenever they're, if they're offered the slip, and they opt not to take it, then they would not proceed their deposit.
Not in front of both of us, however, if you sign up for the slip, that deposit's going to look toward your person.
First month.
You can pull out prior to being offered the slip.
And did you deposit?
Once you're offered.
That's it. I got to write that down. Hold on. No, it doesn't make any sense, otherwise you're back to Joey's concern, which is, who's just going to sign up?
I, the list becomes useless, I mean, it doesn't.
The deposit.
And if you're concerned with the length of time, maybe the smaller boat, the less time, so maybe 90 days on the smaller ones, and 180 or something like that on the large ones. It is, it's very difficult, we, we shot for a big boat for a while, and never could actually reach a consensus in my household.
You mean, the consensus being, no, no, no. Okay, so let's say, small, medium, 90-day, large, and again, I'm using these interchangeably, large, 180 days?
I would say so, I think that that's fair.
Okay.
As long as you're willing to pay your rent. The one thing that I would challenge you on, or suggest, is that whatever that size slip is that they're observing, we need to have a default rate, which is probably maximum.
Yeah.
Whatever the maximum footage is for that slip, if you're going to have it empty for six months.
That's the way I understood it, they're max, they're not, you're not going to get a different rate, say, within the small category of anything from one foot to 20 foot, it's all 20 foot. You're, it's three separate prices, not 20. Or a criminal by foot or square footage, it's three separate prices, that's the way I think you're playing. That was, go ahead.
The worst-case scenario, so let's say it's the 90-day, very long, so they've been paying for 90 days. Their deposit went towards the first month, they're paying, 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 paying. They still couldn't get the boat, so then they hit the bad news, you're out.
That's what I'm reading of this, that's inside.
When you come to file, they, they say, I got, the boat's being delivered in a few weeks.
I got to slow my input, put your rib in my slip for the next one.
I hear the engine is on a container, all the water, it's going.
They're like all those Porsches that are at the bottom of the Atlantic, right?
Does it exist in 90, 120, 180?
Um, 90, 90, 180.
What is the name?
90 for small, medium, 90, and the large is 180 days. I mean, obviously, we've got, this will, I got to redraft this, send it back out to you all, any changes, and then obviously when it goes for order into the cap, then we start voting on it. But I'm trying to get all your inputs right now, again, hey, lead all over this thing. Okay, let's go into the selections now, then, now, this is where there's going to be some differing viewpoints. Now, Beller Beach.
Hold on a second, they left, maybe five minutes, and then we'll take a break, all right?
Let's take a break.
Here you go.
Yeah, I was going to say, this is getting easy, and a.
Yeah, let's take a break, all right.
We don't want to get too far in the weeds here. All right, so let's take a break, let's resume.
Shift one with the same thing.
All good?
Yeah.
All right, everybody, that is now 7:30, and we're back in the work session. Mr. Zabel, you have the floor, please, continue.
Thanks, okay. Might be some discussion here. Again, remember, I'm trying to work for a point of creating opportunities and fairness and balancing the needs of various types of citizens. Beller Beach residents that have their own home slip are not allowed to register for this list and will not be considered replacement after the marina. Why? Because obviously, they have access to maybe a smaller boat than they want, but we have to allow other citizens to have access to that marina, and it just seemed kind of unfair. I got one on my back, and my race was there, now I have two slots, I can put two boats through. So it doesn't make everybody happy, but at the same time, it makes everybody unhappy, so we're hitting the middle road.
Can I say something?
Sure.
I don't agree with that at all.
Okay.
And I'll just use it for instance, if you are in the, I'm going to do days off, essentially, you're in inverted, you know.
By share.
Yeah, lot, then you may not have enough room to have a big boat. And if there's a slip open for a 50-foot boat, what's the harm if you get on the list? I don't, I don't see where that matters. That homeowner's paying as much, if not more, taxes than a home that doesn't have a slip. And I think that it should just be across the board, available to all homeowners, period.
Great thought, but again, it goes toward, I guess, opportunity. Those that do not have their own slip in the back, have a slip in the back, this is their only possible access to voting, and again, I was trying to cross the balance here, but, I mean, I'm going to go forward with this, Brad, but if you want, I guess, kind of, if one gets further for, for changes, you know, we can address it.
Yeah, there can, there are some lots in the city where they have a beach behind their house, and they can't put a slip in, or if they do, they have to have a catwalk out to it, it creates issues with neighbors, and I know a resident who helps us quite a bit, that I know that that's a problem, and is back in our.
It's that, yeah, that portion, that argument doesn't work, because I said, if you have a homeless, if you have.
Well, they have a catwalk and a slip, these limits into the size of the boat, again.
Well, he does have a slip.
Well, he does have a dock out there, he does have something out there, I don't know how exactly, I don't know if it's a beach or what, but it creates.
That might be definition time if you get into that, but that's what's practically allowed to work. You know, it's not, it's not going to make everybody happy.
Other comments on this, the day for selection?
Yeah, we're going to get into it later on.
Yeah, just my gut feel, again, I'm not a boat person now, I have been, but it sounds like we're creating a rule that's, that's handling citizens differently, just because they haven't lived before, and that doesn't seem fair.
That's a good point, because we're going to get into differences a little bit later on, and it really is going to get in the weeds. So, yeah, keep that, keep that along. I said, I'm not trying to fight for this, I'm trying to, like, start from my road down there. Now, at no time will any household, regardless of how many homes, yeah, you may have, you may have three homes, you only have one boat registered for the marina, more than one. You get that, that's it. Again, fairness.
Can we stop and just stay focused on the very first sentence?
Sure.
Because two council members have valid issues with this, I'd like to hear what the others have to say. Leslie.
I tend to agree with Joey, just because you have a slip behind your house, doesn't mean you can't have a marina.
How about it, Elena?
Um, I don't have a slip, I have a boat that I don't want, I have it in my house, I'm sure the husband would love to have a slip.
Am I introduced?
I, I don't know, I think it's, I don't think it's fair.
Okay, which way are you going?
I don't feel that it's fair, because somebody has, so, for instance, we can put a boat in our yard, but we can put a certain size boat, which we have. Well, if my husband wants to trade in our boat for a larger boat, heaven forbid, say we did have a slip, that prohibits him from trading it in for a different size boat, because he doesn't, because he wouldn't have access to a slip.
I see. I see.
So I think it's and I'm using myself as an example even I don't know a lot of water but putting myself in somebody else's shoes that just limits your ability to get a bigger boat if you don't want one.
So you were against this first sentence?
Correct.
So what's a thought I'm assuming that right now that we're going to look at remove at least up to placement at the marina uh from slip assignments or well I'll leave slips assignments apart as remove Beller Beach residents that have their own home slip are not allowed to register for the list and will not be considered replacement at the marina?
Yes. Hold on. I'll say it in secretary here.
Okay so I'm gonna delete that. Now at no time will any household regardless of how many homes the applicant may have Beller Beach have two or more boats registered at the marina so that allows the case where if you have a slip at the house you're getting the big boat you're not violating that it's only if you have attempted to have two boats at the marina.
Right. Okay and I think moving forward if anyone has issues with any one of these just speak up otherwise just let it keep moving right along.
Okay we put okay marina is a scarce asset this is background we're trying to ensure that all Beller Beach citizens again very sneaky here have the same opportunity uh now priority tree I was given two constraints one was size small, medium, large next was really uh who is allowed to hit this list first of all is resident owners now these are full-time residents that also own their own Beller Beach home they're voting citizens that own the house that's evidence and this is a rough take current voter registration copy of their ownership document you know hey here's my mortgage here's my voter registration yeah now your priority point. Priority two resident non-owners these are you know renters long-term they have a voter registration again these are people that actually vote here I heard comments about now we're shafted again you know non-residents well you're not a voter here I had to make some stipulation that that's where it came down third non-resident owners these are people that obviously own I got a home in Tampa or I live in Charlotte um this is the third they own the home but they live elsewhere somebody that is in that house probably right now um that is frankly they're paying the property taxes I don't think anyways the owners are gonna hand over the property tax and they are active voters in this area so that helps the turns them into that resident non-owners and finally non-resident non-owners they're last of the priorities we're trying to take care of the voting citizens and the like so you know it's an attempt to try and make that any thoughts?
I have a question Mr. Ora looking at the priority tree item one resident owners versus resident non-owners uh constitutionally uh do you think that there's a possibility that that rule could be challenged?
That's a waiting question I would say that does the possibility that that could be challenged come up absolutely I think that's true of anything especially where you're starting to make distinctions within your own um community further still in this particular context um this proposal is contemplating divisions based on those who are registered voters if somebody's unable to be a registered voter for some reason I I know that we're in transition on the law felony convictions and the like but otherwise that that can lead to challenges I am sensitive to the dynamic that we have in a lot of our Bear Island communities where it used to be that your resident base made the majority your year-round resident base may have made the majority of your community and that's shifted substantially in a lot of communities especially those unlike here where you have uh short-term rentals permitted as an industry in that regard but yes I I do think that there's a potential for a challenge there I haven't specifically analyzed it I've analyzed it for another community in the terms of access to parks um and saying you can't come in this you know if we have Beller Beach Park oh you can't come in this park because you're not a resident that never is a lack um public parks are long recognized to be public access but there have been permissible distinctions on resources within parks and saying well these gazebos are reserved for property owners who have paid in um and there's some authority out of Bear Island on that but um there is a potential for a challenge yes um its merits I would have to get into more of a analysis.
Would there still be the same opportunity for a challenge if it were uh a state issued identification such as driver's license or just a an ID issued by the state generally that means you're a full-time resident of the state of Florida and that doesn't mean that you're here full-time with the majority of the time if that's where your driver's license is at then when it likely you're here more than you are elsewhere would that you think that that would be possibly challenged?
Less of an issue uh you're I wanna make sure I understand your question you're not saying because o- obviously state-issued ID is routinely used to validate the identity of somebody you're saying the eligibility decision tree here would be you would have priority if you had some form of state-issued identification from the state of Florida is that what you're saying?
It shows that you are a resident of Beller Beach.
Okay that shows you're a resident of Beller Beach um I've not specifically analyzed that issue of course communities make divisions all the time I'm just I'm reticent to opine on constitutional law issues like this on the fly as I was looking at this primarily from an administrative standpoint and and not that that is something as we look to develop this policy I have to look into I'm just not comfortable issuing a blanket statement like that.
Okay yeah.
And I'm not comfortable with differentiating between resident owners and resident non-owners because they all live there.
I can just say I this is how I look at this one property one slip um I just don't understand the resident non-owner I you know of the property owner applies for the slip I don't I think that property owner should should be on the list I don't think it is up to the property owner not a renter to come and rent the slip if the property property owner wants to be responsible for that slip because renters come and go you think they're gonna be with you for a while and they're not you know things happen um I think it should be limited to you get on the list are you a property owner yes okay you can be on the list you gotta choose your zone pay a deposit that's it I all of this these different tiers and all of these complicated um trees just don't it 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 doesn't make sense to me and if I own a property that I use on the weekends in Beller Beach and live in Tampa and I would've gotten a slip rental list I should be able to I just don't I I look at it from that guy who has a weekend home in Beller Beach is probably paying a lot more money than he must sit around the table and his taxes because it's non-homestep and he has every right to get on that waitlist as any one of us do and I it is back to property ownership should be the only criteria.
I mean I I would and I'm playing devil's advocate at this point but they're not a voter in this community.
Doesn't matter. Doesn't matter they own property.
Randy just stated that you can.
I can't use a voter's registration I mean it's a driver's license but that was the thought.
And I know there's a lot of condos that are you know people live in Tampa and have a beach front property and they you know they weren't a rent slip I could see the problem.
I I can tell you from my limited experience where communities have attempted to make as relates to access to city resources um where they've attempted to make the distinction between their permanent residents and their property owners regardless of legal challenges that from a from a community feedback standpoint those those have been some of the more divisive um debates I've seen and again I've not got to the point of legal challenge and a court opinion on those but I can tell you that um those tend to be the more contentious hearings where people start saying I am a property owner I pay more taxes yes these are the voters I I think the both of you are are really encapsulating the microcosm of a larger dialogue that's being had in our communities and that gets that can get divisive for sure.
And we make the doubt within uh the way it builds it I can pull this out I could take the prayer I could take paragraph B which is really we just don't need to get into the discussion on it. So here's the list you already have or go to buy a boat you're willing to place a deposit um should we put one exception in there I understand non-resident owners et cetera but if we have we have us currently a non-resident non-property owner somebody from Tampa that just wants to get a slip. Should we make that step for a while or or should we and again this is priority listing should we place them above a citizen down here on Ninth Street that doesn't have a slip et cetera?
I think we already decided that non-residents non-property owners are bottom of the list no matter what that I think we weren't even here to take applications for a while that's what we talked about.
Okay so I keep that and I'll hold on.
So Jody which word would you think is more comfortable property owner or non-property owner or resident? What because I I'm diggering to you.
Property owner period and then you know.
If you're a property owner.
You're a resident yeah you can be on the list.
I'm not even gonna have I'm not even placing I'm just gonna go with the opposite here's the prohibition.
This is.
So I have a question so if we're using the term property owner then what about those
individuals that rent you know about your folks in the condos you guys.
So that's that's a this is where we have.
Would it not be I like what Jody said earlier about one application per address that way you leave it up to if it's a a home for instance it's between the property owner and the renter but if it's a condo it's an address on its own that person has that right to to do that so.
That's why I was taking this approach is um this allows condo owners or residents or anything to get the slip the owner there's just a prohibition and they're just saying that if you're a non-resident non-owner.
You can't.
Yeah we'll put you out to what it's gonna be at the bottom of the list everybody else if you were it if you was only a little bit you know a little bit combinations.
Yeah and I see I see problems both ways uh personally the way that I feel about it and uh and I everyone's going to agree but there are going to be people who will use this they're going to be living in Tampa and they only come here every six months and they have a slip and they have a big boat taking up a slip and it's never gonna be used and you're preventing someone who actually wants to use their boat they're going to use it often monthly you know bi-weekly whatever um I will always um I I appreciate everyone who's invested in Beller Beach but I will always give preferential treatment to a resident over just somebody who happens to own property here um and that's that's my take.
Can I can I ask how often do these slips turn?
Once or twice a year.
So out of all the slips we get one or two openings we're spending a lot of time on this is it that big of an issue?
In the grand scheme of the whole city you know.
Yeah.
Oh we've had that conference in the past but why wasn't my I've seen other people get both slips and where was my name that's kinda how we came to this.
Yes for our team Belinda brought up a good point when she said earlier they may be things so let's say I own the house but I have a long-term rental Jody so she I wanna vote because I own the property and I'd like to keep my boat there even though I mean I don't live I don't live there obviously because Jody's a for five years a five-year lease on the house and she wants to vote because she does live there so who gets the vote?
I think we just said Jody brought up a point earlier it's like the argument would be I pay more taxes than anybody because I'm paying in Tampa here so therefore the owner is really the one that can do it you can't extend this uh watch if they get the boss if you're a renter oh you're the boss and then non-resident non-owner.
Well if you own five homes and you're renting them all out you're paying more taxes than than anyone is but you're also making sure that um someone who lives here is not going to be having access to this slip.
Well wait place that was uh at any time any household regardless of how many homes the applicant may have in Beller Beach have two or more boats registered to the marina that was under a I was trying to catch it there.
Yeah I agree with that because I think we encountered that situation where we have the.
My fleet. So why hotels are board locked.
Let's get through B right quick.
Yeah so.
All right so what's your what's your proposal now that you've heard everything?
Oh no I'm gonna delete those sections all I'm gonna do is put a prohibition there basically just saying non-resident non-owners they're last of the priority list.
Non-resident what?
Non-resident non-owner.
Okay does everybody agree with that?
Yeah there's no of this priority just that.
Okay.
It allows you to fit easier into the rest of the document okay waiting list is gonna note it's on applied for size of the boat.
Hold on a second yeah and that's where we're at currently is that right non-resident non-owners?
Currently somebody's own a property you can get on the top side of this the resident list um where the distinction is drawn is if you get the opportunity to rent a slip if you have a driver's license that has Beller Beach in it you could have a resident rate we don't pay but the taxes are paid.
So we do have non-resident non-owners here for.
We don't pay the slips.
Um so back down okay broad Steve waiting list is gonna note it's on applied for size of the boat proposed by the applicant um remove priority status and and then obviously we're going to that list that's gonna have the application fee the rules with the application fee uh we're gonna sort by zone and then I'll just remove that um just list will be sorted by zone. As they occur okay city checks which of the three is located for that zones consultant slip is offered first on the waiting because if obviously you already retain and pay the deposit person may decline but if that occurs the name is removed from the waiting list offer then make the next on the list and so on until the slip is filled. Let me just. Priority um actually this may be removed maybe priority will be given to rent a slip for large size and length of boat I can safely be counting so you know I think we should remove that because that throws away all the the prior page.
I think that was supposed to be uh secret.
Yeah but um you add to the list you start from for example you pull your name from small you wanna go to medium start at the bottom of the medium you can't use your number two in medium to go to the number two of large.
So priority is the time you get on the list.
That's it. Uh now the rest of the system's already in there about whether people vote who don't maintain or assume responsibility um you know obviously like the only thing I added on that section was the city assumes no responsibility from the state and operating condition of the left. There's one who makes sure right I know this one identified that's it.
Currently.
Yeah.
But is subject to inspection.
Hold on. Three I would say hold on then is on updating this okay but what was I getting but is subject?
Subject to inspection by the state because it's it's just gonna be like looking at all the other docs.
It's like.
They need to make that one and make some correction.
That's that's in our agreement.
I gotta educate myself is this something that should be covered by the board so I mean you're doing improvement on a property yeah I mean think about it just say don't not for the night I just it came up my thoughts.
Well Charlie we have the dead ones of the agreement if you wanna use the lift and you agree that when you leave you know when you rent a slip you're gonna move the lift.
Okay.
The only way that we allow it to stay is if you make up private agreement with whoever's coming into the slip that they they take over the ownership of it.
Well then part of this modification probably should strike that because our current if I'm reading this right this is where you didn't clarify the language where it says that uh and and that's where they had a lot of words that weren't consistent like we call this the less the uh lessie I think is used here and up here we call them something else something else so we're not using the same word for the person renting the slip consistent but.
Is that the agreement?
It's just a yeah it says at the lessie this is a slip where the lift already installed and wishes to use the lift the lessie must maintain a lift in this one quarter. And then, yeah, some language to take it, it's not the city's responsibility, but probably all that should be stripped in, like, you're not allowed to leave the lift behind, and it's a right to take it out, right?
No, that's Randy, but again, I'd like to have the agreement reviewed, it hasn't been reviewed in a long time. Yeah, and it, it would need to be approved by council, as the code says, the agreement is to be approved by council.
Okay, well, all this, I'll just, I'll leave that there, but we'll just keep in mind, that's gonna go through approval, but I'm trying to make it clear, everybody's changes into this, send it out to Kyle, and I guess we're. Okay, the next one.
All right, Mr. Zabel, I appreciate you working on this, and I'm sorry you didn't get past the grammar police.
I told you, lean all over, I don't care, lean all over the documents, I said, it's okay.
No, 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 this is, it's a rough draft, and it's what we expect.
Okay, now the final one. All right, since now, we are on to sandbag re-group, I like that question.
You know, I said that we're not using, we're not just being consistent, but we're calling it the lessie. We call a licensing, a lessie, there are just quite a few, you might want to look at that.
I have masters inside of engineering.
This is not you, this is the code, this is kind of the code.
Exactly.
No, this part is your, your, okay, that's it.
All right, moving forward, we are now on to item number six, discussion of sandbag station proposal. Again, this is Councilmember Zabel, you have the question.
Roger, okay, the original proposal was trying to move it to the north of the city, but we're looking at it, so, you know, let's place it here, you know, keep it where it's at. But how can we improve ingress, you know, getting into it, getting out of it? And one of the ways, maybe proposed, is I took photos, is, we have a dead end right now, they call it the sack. And instead of filling your sandbag and kinda getting contract turnaround and going back out the other route, which potentially blocks traffic, etcetera, we use this potential exit. It is between two buildings, it's between City Hall and that substation, I guess, from Verizon. And there's enough room, apparently, it's about, what is it, I said twenty-three foot, something like that? Width, which basically could accommodate a car, so if you were filled up at the station, you come to the end of Coldsec, take a left, you can considerably drive out through that way, and then exit out onto, basically, the front seat, although, and into your house. That eliminates backup traffic problems. The only thing, there needs to be some changes there, and it would mean, basically, we have a place of a cigarette bus, a trash can, more importantly, there's a bike rack. If we remove that bike rack, place it elsewhere, we could use that alleyway only for, you know, nobody uses it very often, etcetera, this is only for sandbags, as an exit route. I think we got enough to get a distance, you can see by photos, layer photos, where that last part is parked, it actually is not a curb, it ramps down, it's part of the handicap access. So it's just a ramp, so you wouldn't be banging your car exiting with sandbags.
And during that procedure, obviously, a couple of those parking places would get blocked off.
Yeah. Those that comes out there. So what's your thoughts, I mean?
You're saying that's twenty-three K Y?
Yeah, I probably have to do it was.
Say twenty-three or twelve and a half.
Four K four, what was it?
Four is a recent.
I thought it's number five, or number four, I'm here to check.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's actually eleven-six, and if they make increases, once you get past the downspout and the high line.
Right, if you wanted to remove those, I guess you'd talk for.
So a drive lane, do you know what ten K, is that right? Mr. Engineer?
It depends where it is in the city, I'm just kidding, I don't know.
City, Blue Docks, County Freeway, I don't know.
I think it's.
I'm sorry, yeah, I should. Park is what's. So it gives you room, you know, for you here, and stuff, if you bring a truck in there, you're probably okay. And you also have people back there going, you know, slow down, okay, I want you to go here, and.
Yeah, you just have the traffic, it's okay.
There's always somebody.
I think you'll have to track traffic too, yeah, but I think it works, it seems tied to new attic, but.
Yeah, once you go out there, yeah. And again, the other thing we have to do is really remove the bike trash. And if you wanted to, you can always remove that pile on and redirect the downspout, but you're getting eleven-six.
It's living still.
How are we going to ensure safety the rest of the time? You have these weekend folks that come in, they park over the beach, and then they see this open alleyway, they can just zip right over there, never mind that we've got kids and families that are playing football, and run around, riding their bikes in the parking lot. How do we ensure safety, because we're removing all of the, we're just making it an invitation for folks to ride through there?
I wouldn't zip on that road, you're asking for damage, because it may look nice and smooth, but you're gonna have to go kinda slow through there, because that's actually a curb to get on, like that curb.
Right, I'm just talking about your average person, non-resident, scared of, have some fun in the beach, isn't thinking, zip through there.
I'd be sure we never did.
Just add a couple, rather than removing that pile, if I would leave that there, make sure we install them by each corner, but then you put them, then you install them, just like on a bike trail, like they have on bike trails, if all is available. So, yeah, so it just goes in a sleeve, it's there all the time, unless Kyle loses it.
So just change.
We do that too, but, I mean, that's a good, but I think to protect the building, so that we do get them, you know, person they can't see in dark car, to be, you know.
Like I have a golf cart.
Quite that myself.
The mirror in the golf cart goes.
But, you know, it protects the building, so we only have, we, they're at the hole, and that. I mean, it's all an investment, but it makes sense to.
I think it's more of an investment than you think it is, and I'll tell you why. First off, I'm not, I'm not opposed to this idea, but I want everyone to be aware of what it is that we're actually wanting to try it on. This is reclaimed water, that's reclaimed water, and that's sewer.
Okay.
That's on, where am I at here? Right there, on the backside. If you look on the front side, in front of, there's more reclaimed water there. I don't know what else is under this, but I'm afraid that loading cars down with sandbags and driving on this may actually cause damage. Also, once you open that Pandora's box, people are going to try to, which, by the way, there's a, there's a water main right there, and somebody's gonna turn in and run over that. Point is, is there's a lot of plumbing under this, and once you open that Pandora's box, you're gonna need some way to block the access that's continued along to go in there. So now we've got, we're gonna have to put up some kind of walls or block gates, or, I can't remember, who mentioned the removable blocks, whatever, followers. Just things to consider, because I, the last thing that I would want to do is create a problem even worse for us, for Verizon, and they come after us, because we ran over something important. So I think that we would need to do more of a study to find out exactly what all this under there requires sites survey. I'm also worried about if the county requires any type of, if they have any special law as to actually creating an alleyway, if there's setbacks involved, and if it requires permitting. So just all things that, again, I'm not against this idea, but I just wanna make sure everybody's aware that it's not just a, let's start driving cars through here, and it's gonna work, because I don't think it will.
I see a problem, if they come through, and then they're gonna, they're gonna turn left onto Causeway Boulevard, that's not an easy way to go all the time, that, and that traffic can be terrible. Turn left, and we're gonna get a backup. And I also, I was thinking about Verizon, we need their, I'm assuming we need their blessing of some sort, or.
I think that's back to the initial thought, that what I was driving for, putting the sandbag station very north, because you're already, for the citizen on that street, we block, because the last form, it would have more than a minute waiting to be waited down. Now you have basic street, where we say, well, parking lot, you're parking, people are trying to slowly evacuate. Now, don't worry about divert evacuation, but you now block outside the street. Now, people coming back, you're either having, trying to get in, so you're putting in a backup on Gulf, getting in, but now you've still got a problem, left and right, onto Gulf, which is difficult to. So we're trying to, again, there's no optimal solution, we're just trying to provide another way to, to allow those citizens, easy way to egress, having those citizens come and fill the sandbags and get out easily, and not tie everybody up and, you know, run back and forth from this cold sec. So again, I think the best is, nobody really loves the idea, which means that we're sort of in the middle right now. Just to see if it can work out. A good way to change, yeah, do a site survey. Nothing such as we have to do this proposal.
I have another question, could we set up a secondary sandbag station? You know, we don't need this that often, but in the parking spots over here, so it gives two, I mean, I don't know how, I'm speaking completely from ignorance, because I didn't participate in how many people sandbag or whatever, but I just don't, would it make sense to have, you know, certain addresses with a back line, and then just go to this one, and then that kinda solves some of the problem, because it allows half the residents to go there, half to go here?
I was gonna recommend again, it's like, you could have one down here for the south, because too often, like I say, the north is disenfranchised, it's always south, south, south. Put one station up there, in the Marina parking lot, so it's on, everybody's easy up there, you can get in and out. Regardless, I know it's a hurry to evacuation, but it's not, it's easy to get in and out. People go up there, and then south can come in here. That way, this street's not overtaxed, we don't have to use the rider to leave the buildings. And it's kinda easy to leave now, because now, I can easily, the north can, we get their bags, because they're not fighting the south residents, and the south residents can, we can get their bags too. We just need, the only addition is really, you have to add another series of fences up in the marina, and against the wall where you're storing all the equipment.
Or can we just use the parking lot here, for, so we have two access points?
I was just gonna say, I agree with us, I think the left-hand turn, the pause way, is the biggest issue, I really do.
Especially if we get close to people beginning to panic, and they're wanting to leave, I think traffic's gonna get pretty heavy.
And it would be a bad scenario, if there was an accident, and somebody disabled.
Now, I, I'm ashamed to say that I had a business to take care of whenever the sandbagging was going on, but realistically, what was the, what was the traffic problem? Because we have a, we had a cold sec here, and yeah, they're coming in and out of the same street during that time, but was it really backed up that bad, or was it just a nuisance, because there were a lot of traffic?
It was backed up.
And which way?
And that's for me, that's, it's the backup, obviously, coming in.
Okay, so which way was it backed up, and how far backed up?
It was backed up to at least Gulf, was when I joined, people after me were actually, I'm about to take the right into it. You really couldn't take a left in there. You really had to kinda come around and get into right. Now, that just happened to be the time I came, for those long-term stack and sandbags, but it was backed up there. So now you have, basically, one side of the street, cars inching forward, and you only have that one exit. And that, I mean, I was trying to ignore it, because people in that street are trying to leave. I mean, you may be trying to back down, but now you got these people, kinda in line, you really kinda wait. It's not critical, I know, but that was the only problem.
Okay, so currently, the sandbag station is on the left side of this street right here, is that correct?
It is left, yeah. You're right.
Yeah, the water side.
It would be on the left side of the water side, correct? Okay, is there room at all on the right side?
If there's room for traffic.
But what I'm saying is, is there room to actually move that, that station to the right side? Now, the reason why I'm asking this is not, it's not gonna solve the world's problems, but I think that it would help. The reason why, because it creates more room to stack traffic. You, they're circling around the cold sec, and now they're right there, so you probably added twenty cars separate from space by just putting it on the opposite side of the street, next to a tennis courts. And then you're backing all the way out, instead of all the way in.
I have to look at where our property lines are, I mean, you gotta avoid retention problems, you gotta drain, it's out there.
Think you gotta notice, I mean, how is it working? You have multiple fills, it's not, drive up, my car's filling, no, what it ended up is, car, 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 car. All these families being let out, now, the car in the back is being, you know, there's cars here being filled, 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 filled. People running back and forth as they could fill. So if we were to do that now, you're trying to do, you're still blocking it again, because you're, you're not just getting one car at a time, it's back, back, back.
You're, you're still blocking, no matter what. What I'm saying is, you've at least added more footage of allowing cars to stack up. It's, it's, I don't think that that's a, you know, an end-all solution, but just that alone would probably help a little bit. As far as the second, the second sandbag station up north, where do we get our sand from? And do they have a problem dropping off in two points?
No, and what we faced last time's a capacity issue, which I think we're always gonna have. If the storm kept coming towards us, and we got worse, I think we would obviously, no matter, if we're facing serious threat, we're gonna have a capacity issue. Some cities that have, like, protocol, it gets to a certain point, this is what we do, and there's definitely a cutoff line, given the situation. And maybe something where we utilize the main sand station, and then when we should reach a point where we're backing up, then we load in another one, and then.
And overload.
And don't worry about it, friends, we just dump the sand.
We just dump the sand, and then, really, at that point, you know, you gotta, you wanna try to keep monitoring the residents that are using it, you know, not taking more than twenty, you know, but really, if you hit to that point, you really cross-checking the lists, and.
So again, you're referring to north and south, you have station here, you have station up there. Use either one. Yeah, use either one, the traffic really, it halves. There's no access problems either way.
I think it would ease, you know, ease the traffic, and I think moving it all in one place or the other is not the best solution. There's some other there, some other down here, and I think that we've done the best we can for.
I agree with you. Yeah, I agree with that, because before last year, it was, it was huge, fine, but we don't know.
Forget, so it actually comes out of this, it's a travel period. Everybody okay with that? Sandbag station, and, and how was that manned, by the way? What would you do for manpower up there?
Volunteers are always welcome, the more, and I liked your idea last season, we were talking about giving volunteers up there. That really did help us, and volunteers directly to traffic, like, we just don't have the staff for where it gets that bad.
That's a previous thought, you catch what, create a volunteer list of people, basically, and they come in, and look, Murray, you'll get your sandbags first, cool, but you're gonna help not only to fill, but in some cases, deliver sandbags. It would be just people, they, they refuse to leave, I've been here five thousand years, and just try and help them out.
And currently, is the, is the marina, and is there a good spot, you've got it mine? You've got it lined?
We got, I mean, we got a volunteer there now. We can set the filter behind you.
Without hardware to contain the sand? Is there a price tag on any of this?
I wouldn't go as far as building another container. I would just, if we're gonna open it up, we're just gonna dump sand. It's kind of like here, we had a pile just outside the box.
You just seen those photos, please.
Okay, well, I hope it takes care of any other comments, Mr. Roberts.
I don't know, you guys have seen the Flex Seal commercials, seriously. The guy who saw that crap, now, the guy, they show a house and the house is under three to four feet of water. And they develop this Flex Seal tape specifically for playing. And they do the bottom of the doors and the side of the doors and the windows, and they flooded three to four feet of water completely around the house and not a drop of water here. I guarantee you, the sandbags, that is not gonna exist.
I really enjoyed it.
Three to four feet of water around your house? If your house is flooded in a short time. It's gonna be through the sandbags coming in. I'm on Flex Seal.
The sandbags, they're... The sandbags, other than making you feel really good about what you've done, really, it's to stop the glowing sunlight from going under the doors. And that's about it. All right, any other discussion on sandbags before we move on to general business? 816, I think we've done pretty darn good. All right, did we have any general business?
I just, I don't get to make the changes, I do.
Okay. Okay. I think I heard a motion to, it wasn't somebody else. Did we have a second? All in favor?